Sarah Ross.
I think tomorrow's Friday.
Karen Wood. And she was.
We're here.
Yes. Tell me.
It is a little thing. Sometimes I look at my schedule seven meetings. The older I get, the less I enjoy it.
I know.
Give it to a guard. Have your post players dribble into madness.
All right. Save five minutes.
And then I'll go to home for my football game on Friday. So I probably will be able to stay up for that west coast game.
They did. They had the light. Those were the marbles for Eric.
They did.
I beat this week for some reason.
They're going for a five percent increase in the salary.
Oh, five. There was just an article, it's six point seven points.
Really? Because it's given this.
Good.
Yeah, you're probably right.
I was thinking that.
Well, it's like three days ago.
Yeah, well, they tasked it with twenty four, so it's only three days.
All right, Wayne. We're ready.
I hope you're right.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Roseville Area School Board meeting for Thursday, September twenty fifth. Our roll call will be Acting Clerk, Mannix Clerk.
Director Bogacheski?
Here.
Director Shaw?
Here.
Director Goggins?
Here.
Treasurer and Acting Clerk Clark is here. Chair Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. Any agenda adjustments for this evening?
There are no agenda adjustments.
All right, thank you. Announcements, comments, recognitions, we have a special guest here this evening. Twenty twenty five Minnesota Psychology Teacher of the Year.
Please.
Come on up, Sarah.
Yay. Hello. It's my honor to introduce Sarah Mortel, an AP Psychology teacher at Roseville Area High School. Sarah was named the two thousand twenty five Minnesota Psychology Teacher of the Year at the Annual Minnesota Teachers of Psychology in Secondary Schools Conference. The award recognizes her outstanding dedication to students and her ability to make psychology engaging, relatable, and meaningful. Colleagues and students alike praised her for going above and beyond to create a thoughtful, interactive learning environment. As an example, a Ross student said the following about Ms. Mortel. She cares so much about everyone and the curriculum. My favorite part of the class is how relatable she makes psychology to our lives. It makes it more memorable. That's a wonderful testament to your impact on our students. Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't, I, I don't. I just want to thank you all for bringing me here to celebrate this. It's been a really, really wonderful twenty one years already, teaching here, and many more to go. And I guess I kind of just want to say on behalf of everybody at Ross, but also in the district, like, I'm just one of many, many people here that work really hard every day, that really want to provide an outstanding education for our community, for our kids. And we work really hard trying to be engaging and make really strong relationships with our kids. And like, there's just lots of us in, at Ross, in all of our buildings that do really great work. And it really is, it's nice to be recognized for what you're doing and how you're impacting kids. But really, there's, there's just lots of greatness happening all, all around our school at, at Ross, but also in all of our buildings. So I, I do want to thank you and thank you for supporting everything that we're doing. There are states that don't allow AP Psychology to be taught. So I thank you for supporting a class that works towards our equity mission in the content that we teach. And I, I also teach college in the schools sociology, which is another class that probably would not be able to be taught in other states. So I just thank you all for your support and just for bringing me here today. It means a lot that y'all took the time to celebrate something exciting for me and for our school, too.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Twenty one years, is it, have you always been a psychology teacher?
Um, each of the years I have taught some psychology. I started out teaching our on-level course, which continues and is a really nice option for students who have other things that they want to spend their elective credits on. AP Psych is a two-credit or a two-trimester course with an optional third. And so it's not always something that people can fit in. So I do teach on-level psychology as well. So it's, and I have for all twenty one years.
Thank you very much. That's really cool. And then, and over a time span where I think there are a lot of things that have happened in the world that a psychology student and teacher can really get engaged around, right? If we went through, starting with nine eleven and then COVID and all the other stuff that's happened in between, yeah.
It's been a really interesting, they've, they've changed our AP curriculum a number of times. And it's interesting to see how much more cognitive bias has become a part of the brain psychology that's being taught. And I hope that I'm able to help kids identify when either they themselves are engaging in cognitive bias or when other people in social media, online, are engaging in it so that they can start to recognize when, when we do that.
Well, thank you, because to me, that's, that's the ideal. It's, it's teaching kids how to discern and think and form their own judgments about things in an informed way. Not just learn stuff, but how to think and how to do it.
And, and how to recognize how their brain is wired to function, because sometimes our brain can trick us and we have to catch ourselves to be able to not make errors in thinking or errors in judgment.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations, Sarah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, moving on with this evening's agenda. Summary of community input received for this evening's action items. All right, that moves us to this evening's consent agenda. We do not have any retirements this evening. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Gifts this evening will be read by Director Frank Shaw.
Thank you. From, oh, to Central Park Elementary School for Soccer Nets and Student Needs, we have two cash gifts, one from Paula Bowie and one from Michelle Blomberg. For the Falcon Heights Kindergarten, who are making books, bookmaking materials from Donors Choose. To Harambe, from Megan Gangl, a cash gift for the Media Center Supplies. For the storied Parkview Center School Inclusive Playground, a cash gift from Sandy Putman. And to the Roseville Area High School, a cash gift for the football program from the Little Canada, Canadian Days Incorporated. And as always, we are highly grateful for the generosity of our community.
Thank you, Director Shaw. All right, we're moving on to reports and non-action items. We'll start with the summer programs presentation. Cindy and Isida.
And teams.
And teams.
Others.
Wonderful team. Congrats. Awesome.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you. We always have room for this team. Table. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Isida Thomas, Executive Director, Student Services for Roseville Area Schools. And I get the honor this evening to introduce this presentation. I'm trying to pull my notes up. Hold on a minute, just hold on. I get the honor of introducing this fantastic presentation. It will highlight why our families have chosen Roseville. You're going to see rich relationship building, true collegial collaboration at its finest. And what you're going to see are summer programs that are robust, engaging, and most of all, inclusive. Let's take a moment to meet the team and we'll start down with you, Molly.
Hi, everyone, I'm Molly Flynn. I'm a community education supervisor. I supervise Friendship Connection and Youth Enrichment. This summer in Friendship Connection, we had five hundred and sixty-three students at four of our buildings for nine weeks. And then in Youth Enrichment, we had a hundred and seventy-five classes with twelve hundred registrations and six hundred and seventy-two of those were individuals.
Wow, awesome.
Hi, everyone, I'm Erica Anderson. I supervise Target Services and Unity. I'm a community education supervisor. And this year we had seven hundred and fifty-one students enrolled in Summer Discovery. And we had sixty enrolled in Unity Center, meaning they stayed the remainder of the afternoon to complete the full day. We have three Summer Discovery sites over the district. We had Edgerton, Central Park, and Rams.
Hi, I'm Eric Thornton. I supervise credit recovery as well as Summer Academy. And I'm proud to say that our students earned over four hundred and seven credits this summer in Summer Academy.
Great.
Tad Hagan, Supervisor of the Adult Basic Education Program located here at Abetutetia. This summer, we had one of our best summers in years, serving almost four hundred adult learners for close to seven thousand hours worth of learning. Among those learners, fifty-seven of them were through our career pathways, thirty-seven in our Community Service Interpreter Program, and twenty in our Apprenticeship Manufacturing Ready Program.
Great.
This is all music to our ears.
I know, right?
I'm Taylor Anderson, Assistant Director of Student Services. In the summer, I oversee our Extended School Year Program, which is E S Y, as well as our Replacement Credit Recovery and all of our Health Services. And so for E S Y, we had two hundred and forty-six students enrolled, E twelve. And then, this is pretty exciting, so for Student Services, for E S Y, Replacement Credit Recovery, and Health Services, together, we had staff retention of seventy percent.
I'm Megan Webb, Marketing Manager for the Community Education Programs. And this summer, I took two thousand six hundred and twenty-eight photos and three hundred and twenty-five videos.
Good evening, I'm Laura Frere. I'm the Principal of FAS as well as Summer Academy. We had a four-week program and we had seven graduates, five from FAS and two from Ross.
All right.
Hello, I'm Tammy Reese, Early Childhood Program Supervisor, supervising pre-K, early childhood screening, and ECFE. This past summer, we had a six-week ECFE program that we held at ten different sites within our communities. New this summer was our Friday field trips, which were super fun and popular. We had like an average of about forty-five children and caregivers that attended each one of our Friday field trips.
And I'm Cindy Anderson, the Executive Director of Community Education. And I got to work with these eight fantastic leaders and watch them shine as they delivered awesome programming that focused on student success.
So before we get into our presentation, we just want to talk about how our programming addresses our strategic plan. We address it through Goal One, our graduates are prepared to achieve their goals and aspirations. And Goal Four, the community is united behind meaning student needs.
So this year, we wanted to highlight the many amazing partnerships that our programs have with both internal and external groups. You should have this in front of you, too. It might be easier for you to read. As programs of Roseberry Schools, we value collaboration, we encourage teamwork, and we know that together we can go farther. Here is a snapshot of some of the partnerships that took place this summer. And it's just the beginning of a list. There's many more than this as well.
These partnerships that you see here have such a deep impact on our students and their education, their experience here. But the impact goes even beyond the skills and concept learns and the outcomes listed here. These partnerships bring so much joy and a whole new level of energy and excitement to our schools. So to capture the genuine emotion and liveliness behind these partnerships, we compiled this short video that we'll play next so that you can not only see but feel some of that impact that our students get to feel. So for the next few minutes, feel free to immerse yourself into the world of Summer twenty twenty-five at Roseville Area Schools.
Love it. All right. So from that video, you can see that we had a lot of meaningful partnerships. And we are excited to share three stories that showcase this collaboration. To start, here's our story of E S Y and Summer Discovery. So when we talk about equity, it's not just about access during the school year. It's about making sure every student has a chance to thrive even in summer. And so this summer, we brought something back. We partnered E S Y with our Summer Discovery Program. So we had a traveling special education teacher go to Summer Discovery sites and work with ten of our students in that program. And so for our ten students that were receiving special education services, this partnership made a huge difference. So typically, in E S Y, we provide, you know, supports to prevent regression, recruitment, self-sufficiency, and/or unique needs. But our students have limited opportunities within E S Y because it is just a special education setting. And so with us partnering with Summer Discovery, we're opening up that inclusivity and really allowing our students that need E S Y to have access to other like gen ed programs. And so the impact was very powerful. Students practice communication, social interaction, and problem solving in real-world settings, skills that always can't be taught in the classroom. And so they did maintain their academic progress while also building friendships, confidence, and independence. So for these ten students, the partnerships ensure that they maintain their skills over the summer while fully engaging alongside their non-disabled peers. So this model demonstrates how intentional collaboration can open access to the least restrictive environment, making sure that we fulfill both the requirements of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act idea and our commitment to true inclusion and equity.
Thank you.
Taylor, so I will now share about our partnership with our neighbors at the Bell Museum and Friendship Connection. So we were lucky enough to partner with them in a couple different ways this summer. First, we had one of their interns come visit our older kids' site to talk about how they got to where they are as an intern and a University of Minnesota student and kind of help our students. We use that as like a strategy to help them kind of see the possibilities of where they can go in the future. Second, we got to visit the Bell Museum and experience what they all have there. We met the woolly mammoth. We got to do the touch and sea lab. We got to go to the planetarium. The kids were so enthralled with everything they had there and what Minnesota, where Minnesota has come from. On the way back, on our short bus ride back to the site, one of the students was talking about how great of an experience they had. And they said, but we didn't even make it to the bell section. So that, we took that as like an opportunity to do some research, learn about where, where the Bell Museum, why it was named it, how it was, and all that kind of stuff. So again, taking the Bell Museum's values of inquiry, wonder, or wonder and engagement, thank you. And really living those out. And then lastly, we, the Bell Museum provided us with seventy-five free STEM kits to take home with their families. And in those kits, they include some hands-on science experiments and invitation and admission to, for a family to go to the Bell Museum together. So that is our partnership with the Bell Museum.
Thank you.
The last partnership that we're going to talk about is with our Summer Academy students. We, we spent our four weeks here in Abetutetia. And it was great because then we still got to partner with our early childhood programming. And so our high school students got to go down and read to our students and to show some leadership and some role modeling, as well as the opportunity for our littles to hear a good story and to build some learning connected with older students. The partnership really focused on the contribution that they can give to school communities. And a lot of our students saw an update, I think that Megan put out a week after in Community Ed, and they were so excited to see themselves in print. And so they're very excited to see the pictures that you saw in the video. Our early learners gained exposure to reading and language development, while our bigs, our high school students, experienced that purpose-driven learning that supported them to get to graduation.
Thank you.
Great. We might have created a pathway for future educators as well, too. So keep me out of the way, you got you. Just want to thank you all for having us and allowing us the time to spotlight our different summer programs. Really thankful for this group. We spent a lot of time together in the planning process. And what that time spent has really shown me is that we are truly embodied, taken a village. You know, and we've bought into that village approach. So thankful for this group, proud to be a member of this community that gives so much of themselves to our residents and our students. And I think it's obvious, you know, that you can see our commitment to partnerships and collaboration. It's ingrained in all we do, and we're proud to represent Roseville Area Schools. Thank you. We're happy to take any questions that you have.
Well, well done, first of all.
So first, just some comments, and I do have a question. So every time you report to us, it's kind of like with the Disney movie, Beauty and the Beast. There's a song, right? Something is there now that wasn't there before. In the movie, they're talking about love, you know. You guys, the same thing. I mean, every year, it's something new, something different. You're reaching out, you're improving. And what impresses me is you're not just like doing the same thing. You're always seeking and looking for ways to expand, to reach more people, reach more kids, make it deeper, make it better. And that's initiative. That's not somebody coming telling you to come, you know, to do this. I mean, this is, this is you guys as leaders doing it. That's extremely impressive. I, that's one of the reasons I love being on this board and being part of this district is because it's filled with people like you guys. So I really appreciate it. I, I know the community appreciates it. Maybe they don't tell you directly as much as they should, but through us, really thank you, everybody, for what you do and what you've done. It's really, really impressive. So thank you. My question was, you all cited numbers. Whenever I hear a number, I think of what's the context? Is, is, is that growth from before? Are you capped out? Do you have, like, what was this year like compared to last year? What do you see for next year? Do you need more resources to expand? Like, just, it could, the answer could be different from all of you. I don't mean to put everybody on the spot, but just maybe as a group, kind of where are you with, with growth and future, you know, future growth?
I mean, I can share for Summer Discovery. I, we were really purposeful in growing particularly our middle school program. So this year, we had seven hundred and fifty-one students. But last year, that, that's total, so not just at the middle school. Last year, we had five hundred and sixty-one. So we were seeing growth and like, we were focused on the middle school in particular because we only had about seventy-five students there last year. This year, we had about a hundred and thirty. And we just went to a different model. We called it a different name. We didn't call it Summer Discovery. We hyped it up. Big partnership with that Rams team over there. And so that was kind of a big focus for me to continue that's next year. How do we continue to grow that and make it bigger and make it appealing to our older students?
Thank you. I, I applaud the, the summer programming. I, I don't think the community knows just what goes into the summer programs. And, you know, I can attest to definitely the partnership between Friendship Connection and the Bell Museum. My son was on Friendship Connection staff at Falcon Heights. And this is his second year, so apparently he likes it. I think he really, really enjoys it. And he had kindergartners through second graders that he took to the Bell Museum. He said it was a challenge to corral them sometimes, keep them focused. But he said the kids did have a ball. But I'm, I'm proud of the program and all the work you guys do. It's, it's phenomenal. So, thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I know that you guys are always working to try to make it an attractive option for Roseville staff to join. And I was wondering roughly what percent of Roseville staff keep these wonderful programs going, or how much you have to rely on outside staff?
For Summer Academy, I think we only had to hire one outside staff member, for sure.
And she was a veteran even.
Yeah.
She's someone we were very familiar with. So it felt like we were one hundred percent, which was awesome.
Wonderful.
In Health Services, we were a hundred percent Roseville staff, which was really exciting. And E S Y.
In E S Y, we hire, we hire over, I want to say like a hundred and eighty staff members. And so, is it a hundred and eighty? Yeah, it's a big number. But with that, it falls within, I would say, eighty percent of like Roseville staff. We have a lot of returning staff, and this was the largest returning staff that we've had, which got us to that seventy percent. And we're hoping next year to continue to grow staff retention.
Good news.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Well done.
All right, moving on to our achievement report. Jake Von DeLindy.
Good evening.
Well, a less impressive team, I guess.
Still very important.
Right, yes. Very true. Well, good evening. School Board members and District Administration. I'm Jake Von DeLindy, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning in the Office of Educational Equity. And thank you for having me this evening, and I will be presenting our achievement report, which focuses on our M C A and FastBridge scores for reading and math. As you know, we adopted our five district goals and key strategies in 2023. I think we could make an argument that all of our goals and key strategies must align with our student achievement, and I'm not going to go through all of them. So I pulled out the ones that I think are most important for us. So our district goal number one is our graduates are prepared to achieve their goals and aspirations. The strategies under that are all aligned for student achievement and include ensuring that our students are college and career ready, delivering a challenging, joyful, and safe learning environment, and delivering innovative, effective practices and systems. Our second goal is that our learners contribute to an equitable, caring society. For growth and achievement to occur, we need to, we need to, we need our students to feel they're connected and proud of their accomplishments. To do this, we do this through engagement, interest, and relevance, as well as having our students genuinely enjoying learning. And as the strategy states, we cultivate student engagement and joy in their learning. And for our goal number three, we are a culturally responsive, inclusive, anti-racist district, which includes ensuring that our educators' commitment to anti-racist practices, that we hire and retain a diverse workforce, we develop equitable leaders, and we build a culture of belonging where all feel welcome, included, and safe. All of these things contribute to a culture of learning and high achievement, where students all feel safe, feel a sense of belonging, and a commitment to growth. So I do have some data caveats and acknowledgements. So I wanted to add this slide this year as a little bit of a different spin on some of the things that we talk about within the achievement report. So we know that our achievement tests are typically a one-time snapshot that don't always provide a great look at individual growth or achievement. However, they do provide us with our district trends over time and an overall summary of how well we're meeting the state standards as a system. They also provide us with a look at disparities that may exist. Disparities by socioeconomic status, languages spoken, race, or ability. Without reviewing these tests with an eye on equitable outcomes, some of our data can hide disparities and inequitable outcomes. In Roseville area schools, we look for the disparities and identify them. As Jim Collins discusses in his book, Good to Great, we as an organization have to confront the brutal facts, but never lose faith. We continue to have brutal facts in our data and yet have faith that we're working to improve our systems for our students and families so that all students can achieve. We're not there yet, that's a brutal fact, but we will never stop trying. I also want to acknowledge that we don't blame our students for our results. When we review our data, we know that we're not reaching all kids in the way that they learn best. That's on us to improve as educators. We also know that this one snapshot does not encompass all the important things that are not tested about our students, including their sense of wonder, their critical thinking, their endurance, persistence, and determination, or their humor and curiosity. So we acknowledge that these tests are not all-encompassing, but important for us to face our brutal facts about how we need to change as a system to continue to improve for our students. So before we look at our achievement data, we'll review our, some key demographic areas of our district to help shape our community and who we are as a district. This provides you, you all and our community about our changing demographics and how our student groups compare to the state averages in Minnesota. A reminder that this report is, this report is a look back at the last school year and that we receive our Minnesota comprehensive scores in the summer and report on them in the fall. So the graphic at the top of this slide shows the percentage of students who receive educational benefits comparing our students in Roseville schools to the statewide average. Just a reminder that educational benefits are benefits that students receive in their family, if their family income is at or below certain thresholds. This can include free or reduced meals, transportation, athletics, and activities, and other areas. And the educational benefits, looking at that trend, shows that since the turn of the century, we have more than tripled than our students that qualify for educational benefits, and now about half of our students qualify. The state has also shown a steady increase from the year 2000. Below is our multilingual learners, and you can see that Roseville and the state of Minnesota were similar at the turn of the century, but Roseville has outpaced the state and continues to show an increase in our percent of students who are multilingual learners. And this slide looks at our students with an individualized education program and students who identify as Black, Indigenous, or people of color. Students with an I E P, both of our, both Roseville and the state have shown increases over the years. The state average continues to be a little higher than Roseville. And for our BIPOC students, we see that students in Roseville and the state continue to be more racially diverse. However, Roseville has outpaced the state in our percentage of BIPOC students. We have about tripled since the turn of the century, whereas the state has more than doubled.
Jake, I ask a question about the multilingual learners. Is, does that mean in fact that the language spoken at home is different from the language in the classroom?
Correct, yes. So they're, they would be speaking a second, third, fourth language.
Okay, okay. But it's not, it's not just that they're speaking a second, it's that there is this discrepancy between the home language.
Other than English, yeah.
So it's not the students are in our multilingual program. It's any student, even if they no longer receive services, that have...
These are students that we, that are currently in the multilingual learner program and that have reported, and that are reported by the state. So there may be, there may be some students that we're continuing to support that aren't necessarily in our multilingual learner program, that may have outgraduated their, their number of years that are supported through state funding. And there's also students that we're kind of still watching and supporting as well. So those students wouldn't be currently showing up in our multilingual learner.
If I remember right, when Lululela presented, she shared about thirty-three percent of our students speak a language other than English at home, and eighteen percent are serviced in some way through our program.
Thank you. That's what I was trying to clarify, because I have a different impression. Thank you.
So as, as we show through the last few slides, we've become less comparable to the state. However, we are comparable to other districts and communities around the state of Minnesota. We often look at the data from these districts to see how we compare in terms of student achievement. So the districts that you see on this slide include Bloomington, Burnsville, North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, Osseo, Robinsdale, Austin, Inver Grove Heights, West St. Paul, Mendota Heights, obviously Roseville, and then the state of Minnesota overall. So this graph shows all of those demographic comparison areas that we discussed on previous slides. And also, these school districts have around the same amount of student enrollment as Roseville. We'll begin with a, we'll start with our review of our reading data. So this first slide shows the trend of Roseville area schools in blue compared to the statewide average in red. It includes six years of trend data, all based on the M C A three reading test. Please note that the 2021 school year is included, but is not a comparable data year because, because of the pandemic and based on the limited number of students that we tested during that school year. It's not representative of our typical testing. You also notice that 2020 is not included. That was the year that all state testing was canceled. So for our, for the reading test, the tested grades are grades three through eight plus tenth grade. In reading, you'll see that students in Roseville area schools are about forty-five point five percent proficient, while the state average is forty-nine point six. We remain about four percentage points below the statewide average, and both Roseville and the state stayed about the same proficiency rates from the previous year. We were consistently following the statewide trend since 2019, but had a dip last year and have stayed flat from the past school year. Both Roseville area schools and the state have declined in scores since the pandemic. This slide shows Roseville area schools compared to Minnesota in reading proficiency by grade over the past three years. In Roseville, we see gains in grades five, six, seven, and eight from 2024. Eighth grade students had the highest gains from the previous year at five point three percentage points, and seventh grade outperformed the statewide average. Statewide, only grades seventh and eighth had proficiency increases. Grade ten is still marked with an asterisk as our participation rates in M C A testing improves. We have more comparable numbers of students participating in the 2024 and 2025 M C As to participation prior to the, or prior to the pandemic. This slide shows trend data for our students by race and ethnicity. American Indian and Native American students and white students increased from the 2024 year. The disparity between American Indian and Native American students decreased by about two percentage points. However, disparities for all other groups by race and ethnicity increased, and the racial disparity between student groups persists and ranges from twenty-two to forty-six percentage points. This slide shows trend data for our students who qualify for educational benefits, students with an individual education plan or I E P, and students who are English language learners. Our students who receive educational benefits had reading achievement increases in proficiency over the previous year, while our other students decreased. This slide compares proficiency for our student groups to the statewide average for that group. So 2024 is in dark blue and 2025 is in light blue. We see that our American Indian, Native American, and white students both improved from the previous year and performed above their statewide counterparts. This slide provides us with a look at how we relate to our comparable districts and includes data over the past three years. Our comparable districts had a reading proficiency average of forty-one percent in the 2025 school year. We performed above that and were the third highest of our comparable districts. Five out of the eight districts decreased in their proficiency rate overall from the previous year, and two showed small improvements. This slide shows our school's reading achievement over a three-year trend. Falcon Heights, Parkview, and Rams saw increases in proficiency compared to the 2024 school year. Central Park and Falcon Heights both continue to outperform their 2019 scores prior to the pandemic. Most of our other schools remained the same or saw decreases from the previous year. We're going to switch over to our A Reading Growth, which is from our FastBridge testing. This is testing that we do for all students in grades two through eight. And just so you have a baseline, A Reading is an adaptive reading test, which mostly tests students' comprehension and reading skills. And then growth in FastBridge is broken into four different categories: aggressive, typical, modest, and flat. And we want to see low-flat growth and high-aggressive growth.
I have a question there. What defines typical?
It's about the fiftieth percentile. Students that would fall around that, I would say, the thirty-third through eightieth percentile of, of growth.
Okay, but that's, that's as FastBridge is seen.
Yes, yes. And it's nationally normed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So again, we wanted to see, we want to see that flat and high-aggressive growth. And overall, we see a decline in the flat growth from the 23-24 school year, along with a decline in the aggressive growth. We also see increases in our typical growth and our modest growth. However, to change proficiency, proficiency, we really need to see a decline in flat growth coupled with that higher aggressive growth. So this slide is the same as the data in the previous slide, except for it's disaggregated by race and ethnicity. For context, we included our American Indian and Native American group on the slide. However, we didn't have enough students take the test to publicly report the results. All of our student groups by race decreased in their flat growth, which is always good. However, most of our student groups also saw either a decline or no increase in their aggressive growth percentage. We do see that our multiracial, multiracial students had the highest rate of decrease in their flat growth. So this slide shows auto reading growth for all students in grades four through eight. And the auto reading test is an additional test that can be added to the A Reading for the upper grades to teach students, or to test students on their foundational skills, which include word identification, decoding, morphology, and some matching synonyms. So for all students in auto reading, we had about the same amount of typical and aggressive growth from the previous year. And when looking at auto reading by student groups, we see that our Hispanic and Black students had the highest amount of improvement in their levels of typical and aggressive growth. Although not shown in our slides when reviewing our growth by schools, we see that Brimhall, Edgerton, Emmett D. Williams, and Little Canada all had combined typical and aggressive growth scores above sixty-five percent. And Brimhall and Emmett D. Williams had aggressive growth percent above forty percent.
Just, and it might just be me, kind of the context of when we talk about the A Reading, auto reading, we're talking about, it's still connected to the overall M C A, correct? It's a subsection or just?
No, this is a completely different test.
Completely, okay.
Yep, yep. So FastBridge is our, our in-house test that we use to measure growth. So the M C A really just measures that proficiency, whether they hit the mark or they don't. And what we're really looking for when we're doing our fast testing is to say how, you know, whether they're proficient or not, how well are they growing? The M C A used to have a growth score that went along with that, but they stopped using that score because it wasn't as accurate and reportable as they'd like to have it. And again, the M C A was not designed for individual scores anyways, and so it's, there's some trouble with, with that, using that as growth.
Yeah, I wanted to know, would a typical student who experienced aggressive growth in one year then be in a position where they're less likely to experience aggressive growth in the next year? Or is it the same students?
It is the same students, and you can, you can have aggressive growth in, in two years in a row. It's harder to get that as, as you move up in some of the...
Yeah, as you guys were thinking.
Yes, yes. So this is our early... So this is our early reading growth, and again, this is another FastBridge test. And this one is really looking at our early reading and CBM reading tests, which are at our early elementary grades. So the last one was second through eighth grade. And these ones are typically with our kindergarten and first-grade students. And they're usually individually administered to our students as well. And you can see in our early reading, students show their their basic beginning reading skills in mostly in the K and one. And then in the CBM reading test, students read a passage to an assessor, and that's typically in our grades two and three. So these charts show the growth levels over time. And overall, in early reading, we had an increase in typical growth with a significant decrease in students showing flat growth. Taken together, sixty-four percent of our students had either aggressive or typical growth, which is promising for our earliest readers. And then not shown in these slides, Central Park, Emmett D. Williams, Falcon Heights, and Parkview all had also over sixty-five percent of their students with a combined typical and aggressive growth rate for their youngest students.
Which were those schools again?
We had Central Park, Emmett D. Williams, Falcon Heights, and Parkview. And Falcon Heights had over seventy-six percent of their students show typical or aggressive growth. That was our highest one. In our, in the CBM reading, we had overall improvement in our typical growth, along with a decrease in our flat growth from the previous year. And highlights from the CBM reading from our buildings include Central Park, Falcon Heights, and Parkview, which all had strong combined typical and aggressive growth. And Brimhall, Central Park, Emmett D. Williams, Falcon Heights, and Parkview all had flat growth declines. So this last slide for our reading shows the same FastBridge tests, early reading and CBM reading, but only for the two thousand and twenty-four school year, and broken down by race and ethnicity. So in early reading, most of our students saw, by race, saw a decrease in flat growth from the previous year and saw increases in typical growth. We see that Asian, Black, Hispanic, and white students were all above average for both combined typical and aggressive growth. And in CBM reading, our Black and white students showed increases in their combined scores for typical and aggressive growth. Our Black students also showed a ten percent, a ten percentage point increase in aggressive growth from the previous school year. So these are some points to remember, just kind of boil down all of those slides to one slide. So our points to remember is that we maintained MCA proficiency level from our two thousand and twenty-four. We're about four percentage points below the the state. We outperformed most of our comparable districts. Our grades five, six, seven, and eight increased proficiency, and seventh grade outperformed the state. Falcon Heights, Parkview, and Rams increased from two thousand and twenty-four. And our Native American, American Indian students, their racial disparity decreased, while most other groups increased. And we see a higher amounts of typical and aggressive growth for our kindergarten and first-grade students. So in our reading response, we continue with a focus that reading is our, is a social justice issue of our time. And we continue to put forth resources and efforts into our literacy improvements, especially at our earliest grades, including pre-K and elementary. We invested the most in elementary literacy materials for any curriculum purchase, and that the purchase of the materials includes Witten Wisdom, Amplify, Foundations, Haggerty, which all focus on the science of reading and structured literacy. Last year was our second year of implementation, and we expect to see proficiency proficiency changes in a few years in terms of reading proficiency impacts that will be seen with our youngest students as they age up to the MCA reading test. Almost all K through four teachers have been trained in the science of reading and structured literacy instructional practices. They were trained in letters with over a hundred and fifty hours of training over two years. Our pre-K teachers have also gone through letters for early childhood, the early childhood program as well. And this year, our fifth and sixth grade teachers, who didn't go through letters, will be trained in carryall, which is a structured literacy training program through the University of Minnesota. And carryall stands for the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement, Advancing Language and Literacy. We continue to provide reading screening three times a year in grades K through eight, and intervention supports are provided to our students. We also secured funding for, through MDE, for the alternate, alternative delivery of specialized services, or ADSAS, for about a million dollars of reimbursement support, which includes staff to support interventions to students in literacy, math, and behavior. And we trained all of our secondary special education intervention multilingual learner teachers and alternative high school teachers on the science of reading and structured literacy last year through carryall. And we started working with our, our secondary English language arts teachers in a mini curriculum review to assure alignment to our materials and alignment to the two thousand and twenty Minnesota ELA standards. And as always, we continue to provide avid WICOR strategies for our students throughout the secondary. And the R in WICOR stands for reading and is an area of focus and support in our classes. We continue to have an equity advancement literacy lead to provide support and oversight to our literacy programs and district-wide. And this year, we're excited to welcome Dr. Clarissa Jackson to our Office of Educational Equity. She helped to lead and train carryall at the University of Minnesota the previous two years and is now joining us. We're gonna shift our focus to our math achievement data.
Hey.
Yes.
Can I ask some questions about reading before we go on?
Sure.
Could you go back to the slide that shows the reading proficiency by building?
Did you also want that one to change?
What?
Do you want me to go back?
Yeah, yeah, go back to the reading proficiency by building. It's like a number of sites back. Sorry.
In the packet, it's page thirty-seven. Oops, no, I'm sorry.
It's on the, on what's showing, it's the bottom turquoise one towards the right there. Next one. The right of that. Next one, that one, okay. I'm consistent over my time on the board of being extremely skeptical of the MCAs. I mean, especially when you look at a situation where forever, not just be us, but this whole state of Minnesota tests kids at less than fifty percent proficient. I mean, something's, this doesn't seem quite right to me about it. Given that, you know, they they show something, I guess. And I guess when you were talking about the FastBridge reading and called out that Falcon Heights and E D. Williams, Parkview did very well, and those three are also three of the highest four proficiency as measured by the MCAs by building in this chart, so maybe some kind of correlation there. Is there anything that we think we can observe, any factors at all that are correlative between the higher performing, the body of students that test higher as proficient in Brimhall, Falcon Heights, E D. Williams, and Parkview compared to the other schools, factors that we in any way have any control over, even if we observe any, because you could observe them, but still not have any control over it, such that any factors are replicable in the other schools or any factors are avoidable in the schools whose students test as lower proficiency at all? You just, you get more like questions because it's fairly consistent, right, over the years? Some schools continue to be assessed as higher proficiency than other schools. So it's just, the question that comes to mind, especially if it's backed up kind of with the FastBridge stuff, is there, are there factors there that we have any control over? There's so many factors that could go into this, we have zero control over. Because I'm not, I don't want to be very clear on this, I'm not suggesting that the staff, the teachers, the leadership in any of these buildings in any way themselves are better or not than the other ones, right? It's not a fault, it's not a failure, because it's consistent over the years, we've had changes in teachers, changing everything. But I don't know if there's something about, you know, is it, I don't know what it would be, I don't want to presume anything, because it could be going beyond brutal facts to assumptions. But I'm just curious if there's anything we've seen or observed in any kind of factors in the schools that test as higher proficiency. I mean, I'm very careful to say not our higher proficient, but just tests as high proficiency. The MCA is, I think, is a flawed test anyway. I'm just curious if there's anything in that at all, or if I'm just, you know.
And as we move ahead, it'll be the same curve among the schools for the math proficiency. And it may be unanswerable tonight, but just something that, I don't know if there's something there that we could try to be alert to or discover without, and again, without blaming the student body, it's just, it's a, it's a tough question. But there seem to be consistent testing results among some of the sites.
Yes. There, Mike, you asked the question that we all ask ourselves all the time, right? This is, if we had that figured out, education would be perfect, right? I mean, so, so show me a school where that's, where that's happening, right? And we do, we do see some, right? We, we talk about the ninety, ninety, ninety schools. So schools that are ninety percent BIPOC, ninety percent free and reduced price lunch, and ninety percent proficient on their, on their tests. Typically, what they see in those, in those schools are things like teachers collaborating and just completely focused on student growth and their and their common assessments that they're doing are aligned to the state standards. They are schools where their teachers are focused completely on on the, the achievement that their students are doing, like that, that's their conversations. Now, does that mean that we're not having those conversations? No, I would, I would argue that the MCA is one of the most difficult, challenging tests within, if you rank them through the states, that Minnesota's, their levels of expectations are very high. Students come in with varied levels of, of background knowledge and learning. I mean, when, when we start in school, they're not starting all at the same starting spot, right? So it, that's just, that's a given. And so what we've decided to do is focus on what are those reading strategies that, that are showing that work, right? Through some of the, the work that other states are doing. I believe it's Mississippi that has been about ten years in this work of structured literacy and a focus on the science of reading, and they're starting to really see the gains now.
I just saw an article today that Mississippi now has risen to the top because of the same science that we have just.
And it's been a continued focus for, for many years. And so, again, I don't want to blame our students on things. And so I think that, you know, that there's practices that we're going to be, that we're doing now, and I hope in ten years that all of our schools look like the ones that you see that have the highest achievement.
Well, and the reason I ask is, you know, because you never know, you know? And I'm making this up, it's not true, I'm just saying, in a hypothetical universe, let's say there was a school that seventy percent of the student body was new every year, because the parents were part of a university community that got transferred around all over the place. One might expect that, the, the fact that they're new and don't know each other, or they're forming communities, or with all that kind of stuff, that could be a factor, their performance on the tasks. And then intervention could be, well, let's, let's put all of our focus in helping them make connections and make friends. You know, so that's what I'm wondering, since it seems to be consistent. Are there things that we just haven't identified or noticed or observed yet that we could actually do something about? Help, and again, there's, like you said, there's no magic answer, I know you guys, this is what makes you not sleep. But people will notice this, and I'm, you know, just thought I wanted to.
Math?
Yeah, math, let's, let's jump in. So our first slide for math is just some context setting. Again, this slide includes six years of trend data, all based on the MCA three math test, to include scores that have, that we had prior to the pandemic and scores post-pandemic. Again, school year two thousand and twenty-one does, is not comparable to our other years. Roseville area schools is in blue, and the state average is in red. So in math, Roseville area schools remained about even with the two thousand and twenty-four results, and the state remained about even as well. And district-wide, we see about the same proficiency rates as we have in previous years since the pandemic. We're now at thirty-seven point, thirty-seven point eight percent proficient for all grades in three through eight and eleven, which is about seven and a half points lower than the statewide average. We're about eleven percentage points lower in math than we were prior to the pandemic. This next slide is comparing data, our overall MCA scores to the nation, to the statewide average for each of our grades. Our math scores in grades seven and eleven improved over last year. Grade seven improved by two point one percentage points, and grade eleven improved by four point four percentage points. Overall, grade seven has improved about twelve percentage points over the last three years. And all of our grade levels in two thousand and twenty-five were below our statewide averages. This slide provides trend data for our student groups by race and ethnicity. We see proficiency increases for our Asian, American, Asian, American Indian, Native American, and multiracial students. All other student groups showed marginal gains or decreases from the previous year. With their increases in proficiency, we see racial disparities decrease for our Asian, American Indian, Native American, and multiracial students. However, our racial disparities continue and range from thirteen to forty-two percentage points. This trend line shows our students who qualify for educational benefits, students with an individual education program, and students who are multilingual learners. We see proficiency decreases for all of these groups in the two thousand and twenty-five school year. This slide compares our district proficiency percent for each of our student groups compared to the statewide proficiency percentages. Our American Indian and Native American, our white students and multiracial students increased and performed better than their statewide average for their counterparts. This slide looks at Roseville area schools to our comparison districts for the past three years. Roseville outperformed five comparable districts, and most districts showed decreases from the previous year, whereas Roseville maintained proficiency from two thousand and twenty-four. This slide shows MCA scores for the past three years. At Central Park, Edgerton, Falcon Heights, Harambe, Parkview, and Rams, all increased math proficiency from two thousand and twenty-three. And with their continued proficiency increases about, over the past three years, Central Park is now nine percentage points above their two thousand and nineteen pre-pandemic proficiency rate. So these next two slides will switch from MCA data to FastBridge data. And in this slide, we're looking at growth for all students tested on early math and A math. So this is the first year that we've had early math data for our youngest students in K and one, which measure, measures early math concepts like number identification, number sequencing, decomposing numbers, place value, and story problems. We had sixty-four percent of our students in either typical or aggressive growth, which is above average. Many of our sites, including Edgerton, Emmett D. Williams, and Little Canada, had extremely strong typical and aggressive growth scores, over seventy percent. Little Canada had three quarters of their students at either aggressive or typical growth. And Emmett D. Williams had forty-one percent of their students at aggressive growth. This year includes, or sorry, A math includes all students in second through eighth grade. And in FastBridge, A math growth, we had about the same amount of growth in typical and aggressive as last year. However, we see a decrease in flat growth. And this slide shows the growth of our student groups by race and ethnicity for both of those early math and AMATH tests. In early math, we see that Hispanic and white students had the highest amount of, of students with typical and aggressive growth. For AMATH, we see that black and white students had the highest amount of aggressive growth and the lowest amounts of flat growth. And other AMATH data, data, Falcon Heights, Little Canada, and Rams had strong combined typical and aggressive growths, rates compared with low rates of flat growth. And this is our math points to remember. These are just those bullet points kind of narrowed down from those other previous slides. So, MCA scores remained even with twenty twenty-four and so did the state. Our grade seven and eleven saw proficiency increases on the MCA. Grade seven has improved twelve percentage points over the last three years. Our racial disparities decreased for Asian, American Indian, Native American, and multiracial students. And our racial disparities continue to be persistently too high. We had proficiency increases at Central Park, Edgerton, Parkview, Rams, and Ros. And our proficiency percentage increases over time. We saw that Central Park has increased their ten percentage points since twenty nineteen. Edgerton has increased twelve percentage points since twenty twenty-two and Rams, seven percentage points since twenty twenty-three. We have had high typical and aggressive growth in early math and decreases in flat growth for AMATH. So, our math response is that we continue to partner with Dr. James Brickwitty to provide cognitively guided instruction, which is professional development for our teachers in kindergarten through eighth grade. This summer, we had more than twenty teachers take a week-long training, which continues over the school year. And rather than a math program or curriculum, CGI is a way of listening to students, asking smart questions, and engaging with their thinking, all with the goal of uncovering and expanding their mathematical understanding. At Rams, our math teams have focused on standards and aligning, aligning their common assessments to MDE standards and proficiency levels. And both K six and seven twelve math curriculum review teams continue to, continue their work this year to match with the MDE rollout of their new math standards in school year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. We continue to offer MCA testing at the high school level during the school day, rather than a separate testing day for tenth and eleventh grade students, which has improved our test participation. And we're now providing math screening three times a year in grades K through eight with supports and some intervention work to our students in math. So, some brief science information, there is just a summary of information for you for this year. This year was the first year that we're testing MCA four in science. And so, we haven't received results yet from the state. We'll receive those sometime in October. We do test for MCA science in grades three, five, and in high school after they finish their biology. We'll bring these back to you when we have them reported. Also, these new results will not be able to be compared to MCA three. So, it's a whole new test, and so we can't really say, here's, you know, the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five trend scores. So, these are all based on new science standards as well. A heads up that this is going to be happening next year for reading. So, this will be the first year that we do the reading MCA four. And so, though, we, again, will have a break in some of that trend data and have to look at some new trends that we'll be starting from there. So, that was a lot, and we already had some questions and discussion, but if there's more things that you'd like to discuss or ask.
Yeah, I'm interested to know with the aggressive changes in curriculum and techniques, pedagogical techniques that are going on in both reading and math. How are the teachers responding to that? And I'm specifically sort of looking for how they're seeing it working in the classroom, whether they, whether they feel it's effective? Is, is that, is, is that feedback good? Or middling, or are they annoyed?
Good question. I think going through the, the process of our curriculum review for our elementary teachers was a really important first step for us. So, even before the state said, you have to do this structured, structured literacy and science of reading training, we were already looking at doing that. And a part of that in their curriculum review, they really studied the, oh, I can't remember the podcast, sold a story. And through that, there was a lot of cognitive dissonance for teachers because they felt like, I've been doing it wrong for a long time and, and it was very hard. And, and so I think coming to grips with like saying, I'm here to do right by students, but, but by the practices I was doing may not have been supportive of all of our students. And I, so I think that was hard at first to like confront that brutal, that brutal fact. But then, I think after taking a step back and saying, okay, the, here, here is what works, and so let's put those into practice. It's hard when you have to go through a hundred and fifty hours of training. That's a lot, and in, in two school years over that amount of time. But I think teachers are willing to do it based on the results that, that they're starting.
They're seeing, okay, okay.
And some of it is, like, we had two things all at once, right? So, we had a new curriculum and we have new, some significantly new practices and training, all, all at the same time. And so, that, that was hard. I mean, that, that's a hard thing to do. And so, there is still some learning that we're doing along with, along with the implementation of new curriculum. So, like, what is it that I can cut out? What is it that I can make sure that I need to hit on? What is, what is it that I, that I not wrote, you know, reading for my students, but that I can now kind of own on my own and teach in the way that I need to make sure that we have some really good engagement? I think the first year that you go through an implementation, it's so much learning for, for teachers. And especially with a, a layered curriculum approach that we have as well. So, we're still feeling like we're implementing and will be probably for the next two years as well.
And math the same?
Math is different. So, math, we've done some on-the-side training with, with CGI. And that's been just voluntary, and we've heard really good results from our teachers. And as you can see, Central Park has seen some really good results. They have put all of their teachers through that CGI training. And so, like I said, like, they have seen some of the highest increases in proficiency since the pandemic. And, and, and even like their math scores now are higher than the, than they had during the, or before the pandemic, which very few other schools in the state or nation have really seen. So, we see some promising results with that. Currently, K six math is in curriculum review. And so, they're rolling their new math curriculum out with the rollout of the new math standards. And so, that will be in twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. So, a few years, yeah. But really heavy elementary focus in these next, well, in the last two years and then upcoming as well.
I, I would just quickly add to, just to kind of address your question, Dr. Shaw. And, and some of the feedback we've gotten from teachers around professional development the last two years, if we look at what twenty-three, twenty-four school year and some of the feedback we were getting, I think that was our first year of implementation of this, and there was a lot of, you know, just comments about how, how hard it was. You know, those kind of comments where you're, you know, you're going through that learning pit and you're kind of struggling, but you know, you believe in this stuff. But man, it's tough right now. And then compared to the information, feedback we got this past year, it was, it was a different tone to it.
Oh, good.
There were, you know, talks of, you know, at, at first they were complaining about how long it took to get through a lesson and trying to hit, you know, all eighteen parts of that lesson. And now being able to understand like how those eighteen parts work and then being able to move faster through those, those lessons. So, some of those things started to come through in our feedback where we could tell there was a shift in just like, okay, I'm not struggling like I was, you know, with two years of learning this stuff while like maybe teaching something that was kind of counter to it while you were learning. And, and then trying it out, and then now second year, and so now we're in our third year. So, I'd, I'd expect that to continue to, to head in a positive direction as far as how teachers feel about the implementation on the reading side.
Yeah, great, great, great. So, so the ground is fertilized, the seeds are planted, it's been watered.
Ready to grow.
Thank you.
You mentioned CGI. What percent of our staff would now be through that in terms of, I'm assuming that's specifically elementary staff, is that correct?
It's actually, some middle-level teachers as well have taken that. So, I, I honestly would have to come back to you to give you a percentage of, of teachers.
Is it a pretty broad spread now? Is it starting to gain critical mass or we're still a ways from that?
We're still a ways from that, but it's sprinkled in. I mean, I, okay, so like Central Park has critical mass, obviously, right? But then sprinkled in at each of our other sites as well.
Thanks, I appreciate that thoughtful and deliberate presentation and the points to remember. I appreciated those slides as well. My question slash comment, it seems like some of the racial disparities have increased. Is we have any thoughts on how, you may have answered it, or do that, how we plan to look at that? Or is there anything that we have that, so it doesn't keep increasing, I guess?
Yeah, I think one of the things that, that we're really focusing in on this year especially is our new teacher development evaluation rubric. And it's focused on cultural competence. And it's really about how are we making sure that we are connecting with our students? How are we bringing student voice, bringing all aspects of who students are into the classroom and acknowledging that? And so, it's, it's, we've got rubrics now for what those things look like. We've been talking for years around, you know, equitable practices and equitable teaching. And now we have, I guess, our learning criteria for what that should and needs to look like in our classroom. We've been talking this year about leveling up our, our expectations and leveling up what we're doing in the classroom. And so, I think that's one area that I think is, will, when, when we talk about with students, right? We talk about, we need to make their learning explicit to them. So, so what is it that they need to learn and how can we measure that? We feel like we've got that now for our teaching staff, right? Because for us as administrators, those are our learners. And so, how do we make sure that we've been very explicit and specific about, these are the things that we need to see? And now it brings alignment from our, from our vision, from our equity vision, from our goals and key strategies now down to the classroom. It's not something that's separate, like, we used to have the Charlotte Daniels in four domains and a, and a fifth domain that would describe what that cultural competence would look like. But now it's just, that's what it is. And, I mean, I, I think a big part of it is, is belief in our students, right? Like, and, and, and so, we believe in our teachers and we believe that they can follow and level up to these expectations as well.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate, so I think that was different than last year's, the data caveats and acknowledgements. I think it's important that we acknowledge where students are at. You know, we always, we have this, I've been on the board now ten, ten, eleven years. And it's, we have this, you know, achievement report every fall. And we know it's giving us, it's a standardized test, giving us this data where we need to do better. I, I think we all acknowledge that. But I've never doubted our ability to get to district goal one by the spring. All of us, we're all going to these celebrations, we're going to these graduations and talking to these graduates. These graduates coming back to teach, take positions in the district, knowing what they're doing. I've never doubted we're getting to our graduates who are prepared to achieve their goals and aspirations. I mean, I know we all know this, but it's just, it's the little exercise that I have to sometimes go through. You know, the MCAs, they don't measure social and emotional intelligence. They've never captured someone like my daughter, who did horrible on these, severe test anxiety, never measures that. They never measure artistic talent, you know, athletic talent. They never measure how well-rounded our students are. And I just, that, that's just something that I have to go through mentally when I go through this. And I know you throughout ten years, and I know you're not really forecasting anything, but, you know, and maybe it's a pipe dream, but I, I hope even before then, I hope there's a different test. I hope there's a different system, I hope there's a different process. And I'm telling this community-wide, maybe state legislators, I hope there's something different. I think we're always going to have some type of standardized test, but something that meets students where they're at. Just, I, I just, I just feel it, I just hope someday we're, we're there. I'm just, it's my little, my little soapbox, so.
Can I just respond? I was just going to say, I, I just appreciate that, that, that's something that I believe in Rosevalerie schools, right? Like, my, my kids go here as well. And the, I feel like that's a part of like choosing Roseville is because we have and we believe in a well-rounded education. It's not just about these, the test scores that, that come out once a year. And it is about the test scores that come out once a year as well. Like, we can't just ignore them and say they don't exist. And because it does help us to say, where do we stack up? How do we, how are we doing in, in terms of some of these things? And they also do, they don't allow us to hide our racial disparities as we had in the past, prior to that. And so, I think some of those things bring us like the frustration, but also, you know, there, there is some points that we, that we have to, that we have to do based on this.
One of the things that I've observed, having been on this board for a while, is we come up with these great teaching techniques. And we're hoping that, that as we're improving our techniques, cognitive guided instruction, science of reading, but the other techniques before then, we've done a lot of things. We always hope that's going to bring down the racial disparities. But what I keep seeing is that our white students are equally benefiting from it. If you look at both the math performance and the reading performance against the state, we are significantly above in both categories. So, it's like all of our students are benefiting from it, which is fantastic and wonderful and preparing our students for success. But yet, we still have this challenge of the gap. And we're not, we haven't been successfully decreasing it. And I know we're doing some great things to try to work on that. But, but it's been, it's been kind of a, a tough situation. Because it's, it's, which is wonderful to benefit every, benefit everybody, but we continue to have that challenge of how to support our students who are, are racially diverse or ethnically diverse, et cetera, and give what they need for support. And so, I really appreciate the culture response of teaching, appreciate the continued emphasis on that. And we've got a lot more work to do, obviously.
And that's why we have a strategic plan that, that guides that work too.
Right.
I think what Kitty, what you just said gets at the heart of, of the anti-racist nature of our, of our, of our values. It's not just raising the lakes while all the boats rise. It's helping the boats that are having trouble maybe more, the boats that are not having as much trouble. And how do you do that? Do we put more resources directed into, you know, certain groups, certain categories, certain buildings? Because the point is, and, and, I want to be clear, I, I see teachers and students like this. So, if we're failing our students of a certain race, if we're failing our students in a certain building, we're failing our teachers there too. And I don't know if there's a way to even get the teachers involved too, what do you really need? What, you know, is, is it more, is it more teaching bodies in the classroom? Is it, is it targeted smaller class sizes for certain buildings or certain groups? Is it more teaching assistants or interns that are targeted to areas that we, we need to intervene more? Because it's just not closing that gap, I, I don't know what it is. Because it's just not closing that gap. I, I don't know what it is. I'd be hoping there'd be something we could do that's very targeted. It's difficult to understand what that could be.
And it's kind of yes and. I mean, we want to continue to improve, um, our teaching techniques. Or, for example, the college, I mean, we haven't talked about that, that much in a couple of years. But, um, in terms of the number of students participating in college credit classes, it used to be, um, you know, a, you see, a lower percentage of students and we were trying to close the gap and we did close it somewhat. But we raised the white students significantly too, because as we changed our processes and our approaches, it helped everybody. Um, and it's just, it's, it's a dichotomy or, I don't know, perhaps that, but it's, 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 it's gotta be a yes and.
Yeah, we want to see growth for all groups of students, right? We, we just know that there is more growth that we need to see for some of our students, right?
Yep.
More, uh, higher rates of growth.
All right. Thanks Jake.
Thanks for your leadership, Jake.
Well, and I just, I wanted to compliment you on the data caveat, kind of at the beginning. I really appreciate that context setting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, uh, moving on to our safety technology levy update. Superintendent Lake and Secretary Director Sheri Thompson.
Yeah, welcome Sheri to the table. So we ask for the board's patience because you were, we know that you've seen this presentation, some of you many, many times over the past month or month of four to six weeks. And we think it's important that the presentation is recorded for our community and our public. And so we'd ask that we move through the presentation and then ask for the board's participation with questions and comments of following the presentation so that the community can follow along, uh, in a recorded fashion. So, we know that, welcome Sheri.
Thank you.
You want to say good evening?
Good evening.
Yes. Uh, we have an important, uh, safety and technology levy. We're going to our voters on November fourth. Uh, we'll have the opportunity to vote on a capital projects levy again for safety, security and technology.
So if approved, the levy would provide the district with a dedicated source of funding uh, for technology and to provide our school security in those items that fall under, um, technology. It would generate six million dollars per year over, uh, for ten years. So sixty million dollars in total over ten years. Uh, looking as, as far as some of the items that we have had or that we've gone to our voters for, uh, thanks to the support of our community, voters have approved back in twenty seventeen. Uh, voters approved a hundred and forty-four million dollar, uh, building bond. Uh, again, those funds can only be used for, for our buildings and facilities. Uh, move, moving forward to twenty twenty-one, our voters then approved, uh, renewal and an increase in our operating levy. Uh, those funds, um, are dedicated to provide additional operating dollars for our general fund. And we obviously, um, deeply value the investment that, um, our community has made and continues to make uh, in our, in quality education, our facilities and our essential services. So, um, why are we asking for voter approval for our capital projects levy now? Uh, and the reality is, is that, um, school districts only have two main sources of revenue. Revenue needs to be, uh, it's either determined by the legislature, so it comes in the form of state funding. Or if not, uh, approved by the, authorized by the legislature, we have to go out to our local, uh, to, um, our local property taxpayers through a ballot measure. A little bit more on that information. So we are not like other municipalities, school districts are not. We don't have the authority to increase our, our taxes, um, when the need arises. We don't, again, because there are so many formulas, we don't look at what our estimated expenditures are um, and then look at what we're getting from the state government, the federal government, and, you know, balance that, um, any kind of deficit or any gap with property taxes. Uh, when we have rising costs, um, if we do need additional funds, we are required to go out, um, to our taxpayers uh, and ask for approval on that. Most twin city metro districts, about seventy percent, have a capital projects levy in place already uh, to support these investments in technology. Uh, currently, right now, I know, um, there are other districts that have that on the, on the ballot for November. Uh, two of our neighbors, uh, are close by neighbors, neighbors have not accessed this, these funds and, uh, they are also going out to their taxpayers.
This is a critically important time for Roseville area schools and we can't be left behind in terms of asking for our community's support at this time. We'll watch a two-minute video and outlines our ask.
This fall, Roseville area schools is seeking voter approval of a dedicated source of safety and technology funding. If approved by voters, the levy will provide six million dollars per year for ten years to support security and technology-related expenses such as acquiring, maintaining and upgrading equipment, infrastructure and systems. The tax impact on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is about eighteen dollars per month. Visit our website to use the tax calculator for your estimated tax impact. Roseville area schools is one of the few metro districts without dedicated funding to maintain and improve the technology that supports student learning, safety and connection. Technology impacts every part of the student experience. The levy would help Roseville area schools enhance safety in areas such as strengthening school security with modern tools, protecting against cyber threats and helping ensure safe, welcoming spaces for students. Funding dedicated to learning would provide every student with access to up-to-date digital learning tools, support career and technical education with modern technology, and ensure reliable online resources that prepare students for future success. The levy would strengthen how we connect and communicate by providing funds to upgrade networks for strong, reliable access, improve communication tools between school and home and enhance collaboration for students, staff and families. The safety and technology levy will foster safe, welcoming learning environments for students and staff, empower students with the digital resources they need to discover, innovate and excel, and connect families, staff and students through reliable tools that build community. You can vote on or before November fourth. Learn more and ask questions at our website, www.isd623.org/levy2025.
Thank you. I'd like to again thank Sheri for working to get that video put together. And the community should access our resource page on the web. It has many, many details going through the FAQs as well. If there's any questions you, that you have that you don't feel are answered, please feel free to reach out directly and we'll be, uh, happy to help. Now, so I'd like to identify those three pieces, safety, learning and connections. So for our community, whether you have children in the schools or not, um, think about, describe your own story and how you engage with the school district in terms of the safety of our buildings, our security, how technology engages in all of those areas, the learning and how we're able, or how we are able to connect and communicate with our community. So where will the tech dollars go? Um, first area is safety and security. So some examples of that are inter, internal and external video cameras. We have over six hundred currently and we don't have nearly enough. We're also moving from analog to digital video, um, cameras in our district, as well as staff security badges and the ability to fob in and out of our doors. Again, we have hundreds and hundreds of doors of which about half are currently fobbed. An example of the cost would be five thousand dollars per fob in this district. Costs continue to increase, just as though our community members experience those increases at home, we experience those same increases as a school district. Uh, as we have always followed in Roseville area schools, um, we feel good about our two-pronged approach, uh, working in partnership with the violence prevention, uh, project. Uh, we have relation-based safety, which we know that SEL learning and connection is so very primary to feeling safe. We also have technology-driven safety in terms of reinforcing physical safety with secure entrances, surveillance systems, locked doors and visitor sign-in policies. And again, the way we interact and those rising costs within technology. Student learning, uh, families at home know this as good, as well as anyone. We're currently a six through twelve, one-to-one device district. And we will not, we do not have a vision of expanding K-five, so that families understand that. We believe we have adequate access. We just need to continue to update that technology. Since the pandemic, we know we've moved from, uh, desktop computers to laptop computers. We know that we've moved mostly in large part from textbooks to online curriculum. All of those costs continue to increase.
Uh, in addition to that, um, in recent years, you, um, will hear a lot about cybersecurity. Uh, we are not excluded from those issues as a school district. Uh, we have implemented two-factor authentication for, uh, secure access to, um, all of our servers. Uh, we do also have threat detection software and we work very closely, um, in looking at monitoring, uh, our networks to make sure, um, uh, we work in conjunction with a partner that attacks our networks. Uh, fortunately, at up to this point, it's been unsuccessful, but, um, we invest a lot of resources. Uh, in addition, as far as cybersecurity, for the last few years, we have, uh, been carrying a cybersecurity insurance policy. As you read with, um, other organizations, um, if a network is taken down or if, uh, data is held, uh, if there's ransom, there's a, an, a significant recovery cost. Um, so again, we are trying to strengthen our systems and making investments, uh, so that we can protect our, our data uh, and our student data, um, going forward. In addition, uh, infrastructure, infrastructure for us, um, that's one of those things a lot of people don't notice. We don't notice it when it runs well. We notice it when it fails. Uh, we continue to increase or to add additional Wi-Fi access points, uh, throughout, out our school district. Um, also our phone systems, um, all of that is, um, also, um, run on our systems. We have data storage systems. Uh, I'll give you an example of, um, a more recent data storage system. Uh, uh, Dr. Lake had touched on the fact of our cameras and now they're digital cameras. Well, our digital cameras, all of those files are now, uh, stored on a large server. Uh, that server we purchased, um, when we made, um, enter, or secure, uh, improvements to our buildings. Well, now, um, we are planning to replace that server. It's a huge server. Uh, video files are huge. So not only, um, the cameras, but also looking at, uh, replacing the infrastructure for the items that support, uh, these additions. Our internet filtering is also, um, uh, costly and important in, in our network connectivity. As I said, infrastructure is great. Fortunately, um, we have been well-supported and it's one of those things that you only notice when it fails.
And lastly, just the communication. I would hope our community and all of our family members and staff really feel the improvements in our communication. Our families are, are owed the responsibility. We have to communicate effectively and efficiently, um, certainly timely. And they also deserve to be communicated in the language in which they speak at home, their preferred language. And all of that comes with increased costs as well, including family to school, school communication platforms, the virtual meetings, the Zoom subscriptions, that all comes with a cost. Internal messaging systems as well as, uh, great improvements to our website. Last year alone, we had one point four million dollar, one point four million touches to our website.
So then looking at the cost, um, the cost implications, um, for our community. Uh, so we basically have three different types of property in the district. The most common is a residential homestead property. We also have a commercial industrial property. And then what's also referred to as non-homestead, um, so that's like the apartments or non-homestead residential properties. So those are, uh, three different types of, um, tax brackets or, uh, categories. Uh, we're going to zero in on the residential homestead. Uh, we've got a few different values, uh, listed there. Uh, you will see the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars there highlighted in purple. Uh, we have highlighted that, um, that specific, uh, market value because that is considered to be the median value, property, uh, value of a home in the Roseville area school district. So three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The tax impact, um, uh, should this move forward, it would be eighteen dollars a month or two hundred and eighteen dollars a year. I will also add, if you go out to our website, there is a tax calculator, um, that's right on our website. So you can put your specific parcel value, uh, into that website and know exactly what the impact will be. So the ballot question, um, so this is a copy of the ballot question exactly as it will appear for the election. We, we share this information. It needs to be very prescriptive. We work with our legal counsel. Um, you will see it's very detailed as far as where we are looking at spending the money. Uh, and that of course is, um, in, for legal compliance and transparency. Uh, so we lay everything out there and then, um, again, uh, uh, voters can vote yes or no, and it does state right on the ballot, by voting yes on this ballot question, you are voting for a property tax increase. So again, in the interest, um, uh, of transparency and making sure that we are meeting the letter of the law. So when will the revenue be available? Uh, so this will go to the voters as we have stated on November fourth. Uh, and if that is approved in November, it becomes part of the school board's, um, certification of your levy in December. Uh, and then looking at next calendar year, twenty, the twenty twenty-six calendar year, the money would start to flow with that first, um, uh, with the first advance of property taxes in May. So, uh, the money would start to flow in the spring of twenty twenty-six and we would, uh, receive the funding or be able to, uh, uh, access that funding with the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So next school year.
Yeah, and I think the biggest point that we need to make with our community is simply what will happen if the levy doesn't pass? Well, certainly, Roseville area schools will always prioritize safety and security and the interaction with technology in those systems. And so then the cuts would need to come from our general fund, the same dollars that pay for teachers, classroom supplies, buses, co-curricular, extracurricular and student support. Means technology competes with the basic needs of our students every single day. And again, safety and security will always be a priority. It does come with a cost. So what can you do as community members? Really simply be informed, ask questions and share what, what you know. Um, reach out if you do have questions, talk with your neighbors, um, and let us show you the rationale and our need. We also have two upcoming community meetings. The first on Tuesday, September thirtieth from six thirty to seven fifteen, uh, in the Roseville area high school media center. And the second on Monday, October sixth, from six thirty to seven fifteen here at Umbetutetja. And those will also be recorded with community questions as well. Finally, I think it was at the top too. There's more information to be found at our website. There's a FAQ section and please don't ever hesitate to reach out to Sheri, myself. I know our, our board is happy to, to fill questions as well. And Sheri, any closing comments before the board?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Thank you. So, comments and questions from the board?
I actually have one technical question I just don't know, Sheri. Is the, are the annual tranches fixed and finite? In that we get six million a year, we spend six million a year? Or if in the first year, for example, you wanted to upgrade a larger infrastructure system and it costs seven or eight million, could we do that and spend against future dispersments of the, of the tranches?
We are, um, we are limited to the six mil, to the six million dollars, uh, a year. So we can't draw advances on those funds. If we were to overspend, we would have to transfer funds in from another fund.
And then the opposite question, if we underspend in year one, those funds would still be banked and available to, to spend in year two in addition to the year two dispersment?
Correct. And again, restricted use as was stated, as you could see on the ballot question. It's very restrictive in how we can spend those dollars. But yes, we could have a reserve if we hadn't spent those dollars all in one year.
And I would say Sheri can come and that's not what we anticipate as we currently have these costs and are paying these costs from the general fund currently.
Katie.
And you commented on all these, uh, technology-related extra expenses that we've incurred. When we went out for the levy in two thousand seventeen, can you comment on how much our expenses were for these kind of technology things? Are we anticipating versus how much are we having to spend? that we anticipated versus how much are we having to spend now?
So I think it definitely has evolved, and some of it has been a learning curve. Like, when we were looking at the safe and secure entrances, for one thing, you know, we had that initial investment, as I mentioned, the server for our video cameras, not realizing as we expanded also the number of video cameras that we have, because we continue. At that time, I mean, we were probably looking at a couple mil, less than $2 million initially, if we go back to 2017. And then, you know, you add COVID, and the, as Dr. Lake mentioned, having to move from desktop to laptop computers for all of our teachers, especially at the elementary. That was not our original plan, and we had to move on a dime. But we used some of our funding there, some of those federal funds. We've been very intentional about, as we have moved forward and looking at this, but we have seen our costs with the curriculum and with all of the other items, we have seen our costs more than double in the, in the last, if we go back, all the way back to 2018 or 2019. So now, we've got a plan that we've been developing over the last couple of years of how we sustain this going forward and how we can be very planful and intentional in replacing these new technologies that, some of which we hadn't worked with before, because it is ever-evolving.
And our students, staff, and community deserve it.
Yes.
And we're not going to be left behind in terms of our neighbors as well. We want to remain a very competitive, high-quality school district for our community.
And we don't want the programs to have to compete in order to sustain them.
One of the comments you've made before that I found fascinating, because I thought at the time too, you know, when we go to online textbooks, that they would be cheaper because you don't have the physical book, you don't have to ship it or anything, but in fact, the cost is way more now because they update it regularly, and they can update it at their choice on timing. So June 30th, they can say, okay, we're going to have July 1st, a brand-new book, and if you want access to it, you have to pay the additional fee. And that, to me, was new information that you shared that I don't know that other board members have had a chance to hear, because I guess I didn't fully appreciate how much control the publishers have. And granted, they have all these online resources available and interactive, et cetera, and it's some wonderful tools, but it's also not a physical textbook that we had, even if we, you know, could hold on to, even delayed a year to get a new one or something.
It's no longer the dog-eared textbook, and you would think that not printing in digital format would be less expensive. It is not. And now, it's basically, it's a subscription, is what it is. And that subscription, and so you can't choose to keep using that for an additional two or three years as you adopt your curriculum cycles.
I appreciate that. It's a wonderful presentation. I appreciate the hard work that Superintendent Lake and Executive Director Sherry Thompson, everyone has pulling this together and visiting the schools and the community events and the ones that are still to come. So appreciate all that. That's an excellent presentation to bring, that's all. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, Sherry. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to the Minnesota School Boards Association Delegate Assembly Director, Mike Bogreszewski.
Sherry, thank you, colleagues. So just for context, remind us all, every year, representatives or delegates from school districts across the state assemble, in what is then aptly named a delegate assembly, to discuss and vote on the positions that we want to have our legislators work on and pass at the state capitol in the coming year. So we make resolutions, we discuss them, we vote on them. Those representatives gather for a day and a half, two days, in December, and it is time for the districts across the state to select the persons that they want to be their delegate to that delegate assembly. The state is divided up into 30, I think, delegate districts. Our school district is in one of those districts. Each district will have at least one delegate that goes to the assembly. Some have more, some have less, kind of depends on the population. And so the process begins by anyone on a school board nominating a colleague or themselves to be that delegate for their district. If more names are submitted than for which there are allocated slots for that district, then there will be an election. So for example, if the district we are in has five slots and seven nominations are received by MSBA, then in October, every board member within that district will be able to vote on which names they actually want to represent them. Historically, in the district we live in, the delegate assembly district, we've actually had fewer people originally than seats. So calls have gone out and said, hey, would you like to nominate somebody in addition to the person that you nominated? I have no idea how it's going to happen this year. Some years, you get more than the seats, somewhere, you get fewer than the seats. So just to share that with you, because the nomination process closes the 30th of September, which is coming up, and then, once it's closed and they look at the numbers and see whether a vote is necessary or not, that will come out in early October to individually direct emails to each of us as a board member. I have had the honor of being one of our delegates to the delegate assembly for the last, I don't know, eight years or so. Some years, we've had more than one of us. We've had two or three. I think Rose has been, you've been a delegate, oh, not you, Eric, Rose has been.
I have.
You have been. Folks who are off the board have been. I don't, were you?
No, no.
Anyway, so it's open. So I am interested to do it again. Full disclosure, I did go ahead and nominate myself already anyway, but if anyone else here feels like nominating themselves, or someone either other than me on this board to do that, please do so. The email with the link for the nominating form was sent out earlier this month. If you want to do that and you can't find it in your email, let me know, and I can forward you the link. I think that the subject of the email was delegate assembly nominating process now open. I think it was like September 2nd or something. We'll see who it is. It could be only me, it could be not me, it could be anybody, whatever you want to do, but just wanted to share that and let you know what was going on. And again, the delegate assembly is a place where I imagine, again, as has happened the last several years, one of the proposals of the 30 or 40 that we send to our legislators that we lobby them to do, one has then often debated, do we want to lobby the legislature to allow school districts to levy without having to go for a vote? That typically is defeated in our December delegate assembly, because many board members feel that that wouldn't be something they want to go and tell the public that they're in favor, because they believe in local control. Last year, again, something we talked about tonight, there have been proposals to lobby the legislature to replace the MCA or allow an alternative to the MCA. Or there's been a separate proposal to at least not have to count students who don't take the test as not proficient, because as we know, even if it's optional, if a student doesn't take the test, then it's just recorded as not proficient. So that tends to drive down the scores. Lots of things get discussed at the delegate assembly. Not all of them were approved to pass on to the legislature, and of course, it's a lobbying effort, and the legislature may or may not decide to even consider what we lobby them to do. So there's a process. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Yep, question?
I was in question, it was just a comment to say thank you for your willingness to continue to take on the role. I know it's a significant amount of time, and appreciate that.
You're welcome. It's an honor, like I said.
Thanks, Mike, yeah. All right, we're moving on to action items. We'll welcome Executive Director Sherry Thompson back to the table for our preliminary levy approval.
Thank you. So yes, you received, fresh off the press, literally, at your table this evening, our most recent estimate of the preliminary levy certification for the 25, paid 26 proposed levy. So this is for, this will fund the 26, '27 school year. Just as a reminder, you know, most of our levy, of course, is based on calculations that are based on formulas and whatnot, so we begin a process in August. We began the process with the Department of Education submitting all kinds of data projections about our enrollment, about other things, and we're submitting data this past August for what we're projecting, not this school year, but a year out. So, and the reason that I bring that up is we're always kind of dealing with a levy certification or with levy numbers. You'll see adjustments on the levy, and some of them can go back, like right now, we're really with, we're reconciling adjustments that go back to the 23, '24 school year, and then we're projecting out as far as 26, '27. So we've got a lot of years mixed up in here, because we do, if, for instance, we overestimate our enrollment or we're under-enrolled, we'd get that reconciled, like after the year is complete. It isn't just based on our estimates. So there's many categories here. We have worked through this, again, right now, and I believe we are very close to final on this. We are estimating a decrease overall in our tax, in the tax levy of about $1.5 million or three, which is about 3%. And again, this is all formula, all formula-based, and you need to certify this preliminary levy by September 30th, and I, we're recommending, administration, we recommend that you certify the maximum, just in case, like a late adjustment or something else comes through, rather than a specific dollar amount. Because when you do certify your final levy in December, you cannot increase it at that point. The only thing that would have impacted that is, as we discussed just a few minutes ago, the election. The election is not, any potential election is not included in these numbers.
Is that typical, Sherry, to seek the max on the levy?
That is a typical, that's, yes, that's what this board has done for years. And again, it's a safeguard. I think the, yeah, the majority of school districts do that, again, because it's formula-based.
When we, if we certify the maximum, as we have other years, what number goes into the tax calculations that families receive?
Okay, that's a very good point, because what goes actually into the numbers, in November, the estimated property tax statements will go out, they, those typically go out about November 15th. Those will be based on this, on this levy certification, right? And even if it's adjusted up, if we, or down, if it varies a little bit by September 30th, when we, the state finishes that calculation, that is what's included in the estimated property tax statements. No, nothing that happens on November is included in that, and that is made very clear on the tax notices, that anything that had been, if there was anything approved, like in a November election, that is not, that is not included.
So whether we certify what's listed here, or we certify the maximum, we're in essence certifying the same thing?
It is, you are certifying the same thing. Yes, thanks for clarifying that question.
Any initial questions? All right, I will entertain a motion then to approve the preliminary levy payable in 2026 for fiscal year '26 or '27 at the maximum, at the max levy. I move that. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, I move it and second it. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Can you maybe read into the record what percent decreases on this maximum? Or for people listening at home, because I don't know that we specifically mentioned that?
So the overall decrease is 3.03%, according to our calculations with the department as of today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to action item 7B, appointment of the Bright Works representative assembly member. I hope we've had some time to look at some of the background materials, information. As we know, Roseville area schools were a member of Bright Works. It's a Minnesota service cooperative that provides cost-effective, high-quality education services, so it's a partnership that we have. You know, they're governed by this representative assembly and an executive board, so this is, you know, what they're doing is they're seeking someone from Roseville to sit on their representative assembly. I know one of the documents went over the duties of the assembly member. I believe it's like an annual meeting, and it's not mandatory. You don't even have to go to it, or you could zoom in to the meeting. You know, it's not even being on the executive board unless you wanted to, I think, but we, they are asking us to have a member on that representative assembly, so.
Couple of questions. In the electoral districts, it doesn't list Roseville as a member?
This is from, from last year when we weren't members, so we just became members again this year.
This is our first year post-July 1.
I see.
Yep, I noticed that too. Where is Roseville in this?
The other thing I wanted to comment on is Bright Works is doing phenomenal work with us on the multi-tiered system of support and with supporting Harambe. They're putting in a lot of time. We are getting tremendous benefit from what they're doing, so I frankly was very excited to see this, that we'll be more engaged in their process.
The takers, we can discuss before we move. Anybody else? I think they said the annual meeting is in April, if I'm not mistaken, or?
Was there a due date, Michelle, on this?
So they have asked that we return some information about our district, as well as our representative assembly member, by, I believe it's September 30th. But as I look around at the board, I know there are elections, I know there are some people who are not here, some people who are not running, so we could send them a name, and then, should it change, we can send them new information.
I could ask for an extension too, and we could get them the information from the school district and the board and ask for an extension, and then address this at the organizational meeting in January, if the board would prefer that.
Because the makeup of the board will change, and there might be some new members who would like to, but I think that is a good idea to submit a name, you know, and the information. Who wants to be the name?
Well, if you have one of us who is leaving, then you have, obviously, in January. So if there's nobody who's gung ho for it, I'm fine to be a placeholder until you have your elections in January, unless you're somebody.
Yes.
Pardon me?
It makes sense.
Good tactic.
It was tactic.
It makes a lot of sense.
Yep, all right.
And if there is anything in the next few months that we need to do, I'm happy to do it.
And I just don't know this, you know, so regardless of the annual meeting perhaps being in April, is there more frequent actual interaction and decision-making?
There's not.
Being in board involvement or any of that? Okay, so what we're doing will not cripple anything. It'll be fine.
Anything our board does would help, any organization, yes, yes.
All right, I will make the main motion. I move to appoint Director Kitty Goggins to the Bright Works representative assembly until such time as situation changes in January, come January.
I'll second that nomination. Do we have to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded, yeah.
Move and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I don't think we need to, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Kitty. All right, 7C, work-study session time changes. This should be a fairly self-explanatory motion. As we've been discussing, we need to consider a recommendation to change the time of the study sessions on October 14th, November 12th, to begin at 4:30 and end at 6:00. Community input sessions are still. four-thirty, um, and end at six. Um, community input sessions will still, as they have been, continue to begin at six PM, so nothing is changing there. It's these two dates. And also there, in January, after new board members, we can reevaluate, rethink, uh, the study, uh, study sessions. But I will move to reschedule the study sessions on October fourteenth, November twelfth, to begin at four-thirty PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I wanted to state that I appreciate the fact that the board or the community input session would not be held prior to the work-study session, but after the work-study session, because I think a six o'clock time is much more convenient for anyone in the community, more likely to be convenient for somebody in the community than a four o'clock session. So, thank you for whoever laid that out.
Important note. All right, um, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. All right. Okay, that moves us to, uh, board reports. Let's start with Director Bogreszewski, please.
Hey, I don't think I have anything. It's great to think, you know. Seems like yesterday, so I don't have anything.
All right, uh, acting-
All right, I have to always remember what two-week period we're in. That's the last time. Um, I attended the APEC meeting, um, for Director, Dr. Shaw. Um, there was a good discussion. Um, they voted in some new voting members, um, had a discussion about, um, ways to continue to get students, um, involved in college ready, CTE, um, AP classes there, as well as the discussion that when they came and talked to the board about, um, representative of the district staff, um, from the American Indian staff there when they have IP meetings. So, a good discussion there. Also, the nine-sixteen board had a retreat. Um, half of it was getting to know the board members and the cabinet together, and the other half was kind of a summary of last year and then how this year started. We also had the district finance committee, uh, meeting, um, that we discussed the audit updates. We had the levy information. We also got a report on, um, a preliminary report on the enrollment, because the enrollment report comes out in October. Um, but the promising part of that was that the kindergarten numbers were up, and that would be terrific for us if that happened. And I think other people may report on other stuff, so I was just there.
All right, thank you. Uh, Director Goggins.
Um, one of the things, and Manix was also part of this group, as well as, um, Dr. Chu, um, was our, uh, policy task force met and identified some tweaks needed in the policies. Overall, the group did not feel that any policies were missing or superfluous. Um, they've added the section on virtual meetings, as discussed at our last session, study session, uh, adjusted the policy review process to reflect how our board has been operating for the last few years and some other minor tweaks. And that'll be becoming to the board in the study session, or at the board meeting, in the first board meeting in October. Um, the second item, uh, was I had to attend the community advisory meeting, um, and it was our in-person meeting. It's the first time I've had an opportunity to attend one of their in-person meetings, so that was very nice to meet all the different folks. And we had a fantastic tour of the high school, which was really reinforced the main topic on the agenda, which was the presentation of the levy, which we got to see this evening. But people could see the, how it was being used in the career technical, in the safety and other elements as we walked through the building. So, that was particularly meaningful. Um, and just as I think it's put on people's radar that do good, Roseville has the Saturday, October eleventh, from one to four PM at the high school, celebrating the ten years of impact in the community. And there also will be a booth with information on the levy that will be coming out. Um, uh, to, opportunity to attend the Rosevalia Schools Foundation donor appreciation evening, and, um, the good work that they're doing. We are so lucky. We have community members committed, uh, to providing some of those extras for students, um, to be able to have. Um, wanted to thank all the candidates who are participating for the school board election. And there was the League of Women Voters Forum last week. For anybody interested, that is on Nine Norse's website. You can look it up. And, um, that's some, I, I think, really valuable to help give a information around the different candidates and what they support. Um, and then, uh, had an opportunity to attend the Edgerton, uh, kind of staff meeting, and one of the key topics there, again, was the levy. But it was also interesting, because there was a significant discussion around the fact that Edgerton's going to be updated, um, next summer, over the next two summers. And I candidly had no appreciation of how challenging it is for teachers and how much extra work to get their rooms ready for that process. So, that was an eye-opener for me, um, on what's involved there. I also had a te- opportunity that morning to attend a morning classroom, and that was such a treat for me. I mean, these kids walked in, they put any, there's a little box, a little lockbox for cellphones, if you, you had one, and they sat down, they pulled out their math packet that they have, every day they have a little bit to do in this book, and they're sitting there, working on that, and eating their breakfast. And then if any of them finished, they were reading books. They were engaged, and this morning meeting was interactive. It was just so fun to see that and to see, um, how the morning meetings go, because it's been a while since I've gotten an opportunity to see one. So, that's my update.
Director Shaw?
Um, nothing really, except to say that I've been hearing a lot about this levy. So, I've gone to, you know, a couple of meetings, and I've seen, I've seen it in, uh, you know, the video several times, and, uh, it's really great, the way it's being put out into the, into the community. And, Mike, I guess I can mention that, um, when I went to the, uh, and saw the presentation, uh, at Falcon Heights, that everyone was, was really already aware of it and, uh, and gung ho about it. So, uh, I think we're really getting the word out.
Thank you.
That's it, from me.
All right. Um, just wanted to touch briefly on the, as, um, Kitty mentioned, I had an opportunity to attend the League of Women Voters School Board Candidate Forum. Um, well-attended, excellent questions of our candidates. Um, prior to that, Superintendent Lake and I were at a table with information regarding the safety and tech levy, so getting, giving some more information out with our fact sheets. Uh, I also want to, um, make sure that we're all mindful of the fact that Rosevalia Area Schools celebrates, uh, this is Hispanic Heritage Month through October fifteenth. We honor all the significant contributions and achievements of our students, staff, families and community members of Hispanic and Latinx descent, so I'll make that note. And Superintendent, the board?
Thank you. September is Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, and I'd like to take a moment to thank our six incredibly dedicated community members who serve on our school board. You give your time, energy and care to help ensure Rosevalia Area Schools are safe, supportive and successful for our students. I'm very grateful for your leadership and commitment. And I need to talk about the levy again when I have every single chance. Uh, looking ahead, I'd like to thank all of you, our community, for being such important partners as we share information about this fall's safety and technology levy. We've heard questions about why we're asking for support now, following our two thousand seventeen bond referendum and the two thousand twenty-one operating levy. The answer is simple. Unlike cities or counties, schools need voter approval to fund many of the things our students and staff depend on. This levy is all about keeping our schools safe and supporting learning every day. This includes both, both physical safety, like secure entrances, cameras and locked doors, and classroom technology that teachers and students use constantly. Technology isn't optional. If the levy doesn't pass, the district would need to take the funding from other areas, which could mean fewer resources in our classrooms, and that is the reality. We hope you'll consider joining us for one of our upcoming information sessions. Join us on Tuesday, September thirtieth, from six fifteen to seven, six thirty to seven fifteen, excuse me, at Rosevalia Area High School, or Monday, October sixth, again from six thirty to seven fifteen, at Ambetu Tetches Education Center, to learn more about the levy and ask questions. Please bring a friend or a neighbor. And again, please feel free to reach out to me directly with any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further business before the board? If not, um, we stand adjourned. Thank you.